Good afternoon, welcome to our study session on early childhood center. The Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education and Company. I'll turn this over immediately to Dr. E to kick off our study session.
Thank you, President Margot. What you have in front of you up here at the front table, if you will, is you have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we're going to be showing. You also have just the last demographic study. Because of a lot of what we talk about when we talk about growth and change, we always want to refer back to our demographics so you can see what the enrollment projections are. I'll just point out quickly that in our last enrollment projections, that the, it's the last page of that enrollment package is, they did a projection for us for what would be considered to be, where we would be if it was low enrollment, moderate, or high. And we are in the high enrollment projection and that's due to the TK expansion. But they had us right at 3107, which is really where we're at. So I just want you to just have this in front of you if you want to look to see kind of what the future projections hold. Although, just talking to Mr. Guzman, we're probably due for another demographic study. Probably soon. Then you also have just a larger map that Hawthorne just for, it's also in the presentation, but we thought it might be easier for you to see where currently we have our TK and our TK sections. We wanted to provide that in a format where you could see it probably better than the presentation or on the screen. And I just want to start off by thank you all for being here. And just as a reminder, we have been talking about preschool as part of our strategic plan and, and you'll remember even last May, there was a presentation that was provided for you that talked about three different options. Due to evolving conversations about what the, what an early childhood center could look like and/or Hawthorne, what Hawthorne could be used for. That's been a topic of conversations for quite some time as far as what has been brought to you as a Board of Education. This is kind of the, a new beginning for this conversation today to get some direction from our school board. But I also want to point out too that we haven't had any official conversations with our city partners. And so the next conversation that we have, we'd like to begin talking with the city and our JPA partners to see how they fit into the vision that we have moving forward. So that's kind of where we are now and kind of some next steps for our school district. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Seaman. Oh, to Mrs. Maybear.
Come on. I'm pressing the right button. She has to be in Board of Education, so we're here. And what I'm going to be going over are the six potential options that we can move towards. And so three of which we've actually all gone over before. I'm going to start with those three and then the additional three that we've added on and researched about. And what we hope is to get through what these six options are and then be able to go through questions with you at the end of those with all the correct people being able to answer those. But option one, as was presented to you in the strategic plan last year, early last year, was having an early childhood center with a potential of six classrooms. I know many of us went on a tour of Hawthorne, looked at what that went, what that could potentially look like. And from there, we started to build like what our rationale and vision for the program would be. What, what the process to like be able to run this program would look like by obtaining a license. The ratio requirements of running a preschool because we're talking about a different age student that, you know, than a school district runs. What the staffing would look like for the option number one. We did some comparables with city programs and other districts about what the cost would be for, you know, a resident Beverly Hills to attend this potential school and then what those maps look like. So much of this we've gone through as well as what the revenue could possibly be. And with the big word of estimated being within that. What our curriculum would look like. Currently, this is much of the same curriculum our TK staff is using. You know, with adding on our little kiddos. And then what a daily, day-to-day life of a preschooler would look like. And then what would be our ed services and our district office next steps. Moving on to option number two is having that same ability as option one, but keeping TK at Hawthorne as well. The maps are exactly the same and our rationale and vision is very similar to what that would be as well as what we've just showed you. The one thing changing would be the staffing requirements, obviously keeping more TK classrooms. And the staff required for that would be different.
Wait, what would the change, what would the change include?
The change was adding TK. So option one was just preschool. And then option two is preschool and TK.
TK?
Yes.
And option two is actually 11 classes, correct? Whereas option one is six.
Six, correct. And very similar in process. And then obviously our option number three, which is to take the facility and rent it back to the city for their current preschool programming and their, their potential expansion of what that program would be. We have added on three additional options. I'm going to hand over the mic to Mr. Seaman who could go ahead and speak to those.
Yeah, absolutely. Obviously, good afternoon, everyone. So thank you, Maggie, for being able to show you all the work that has happened over the last year and a half through the conversation and those three first options, right? So just kind of in review, back to early in 2022, we discussed during our strategic plan summer, the exploration of the new CC. Since then, we've even had many, many other opportunities to just kind of, as we explored other programs in other cities, look at and found other options to present to you today. And that's what we're going to kind of talk through over the next three is ultimately, option four could be the possibility of us moving our city preschool programs to Horseman. Right now, allowing the city to stay maintained in their Cold Creek Canyon and the Roxbury location. But utilizing the possible library at Horseman, being able to separate that space into two, provide some facilities, some restroom facilities, which would also give the city a external entrance, their own entrance on the campus, while also bringing over our student services program onto that campus and not doing any changes to the current ER model. Then, that would then allow us to explore further conversations with how would we like to utilize the Hawthorne campus for whether that be a rental space or not. But one thing we do need to consider is we do have the possible space of bringing over with some construction to have our two city preschool programs that are currently hosted at Hawthorne and our special education or student services program moved over to Horseman facilities.
Can I just add one second about that? When you say that there's some construction, it means that you have to take the library and make two classrooms and a bathroom? Is that the only construction that would be required?
Correct.
Have you given the thought to where you're going to put the library?
Yeah, so we, and we have. And it's something that we want to move anyways. So that's outside of that conversation, but it is important.
And that doesn't require more construction to move the library into a new space?
No.
Okay.
It is important to note though, any type of alterations that we make, material alterations, would require us to then speak with DSA. And oftentimes when you have DSA involved, you also have to update other things. However, the, the campus is pretty up to date, so I don't really see too much going on there. But I just want to have that out there as a disclaimer, you know, that we would have to involve DSA in this option.
Yep. So option five, thank you, associate, is moving our preschool programs to Horseman and to ER. And so again, we can also, you know, we can also mix it up a little bit. Is providing families that live north of will sure as have the opportunity to have a possible preschool program at ER while also providing, then separating it, putting one preschool program at Horseman. With also bringing then our student services program to have same-age colleagues through the city program while still possibly having access to some of the other prime programs at Horseman. So you could also take what's currently happening at Hawthorne and possibly splitting it up amongst the two campuses. On the right-hand side though, that could potentially require us to then start the process of, you know, looking at the way that we're utilizing the library space. Is it easier to convert that into a classroom to support the preschool program? And then utilizing one of our current TK classrooms that's currently located next to the prime program? Would that be a quick insert for our preschool program? Also looking at, again, we've brought this up of the ER location. It's been a while since I've had to say El Rodeo consistently, right? So bringing ER and either looking at the first grade hall room. We've exercised the idea of a Jack and Jill bathroom possibly there. If not, looking at the music room, which we've, it is the music room, but we've labeled it the green room in different conversations. Also providing a different restroom facility there. So there are those options in addition within this five. Knowing that if we were to do that to El Rodeo, we would always want to make sure that during the enrollment process, that Horseman would always be our overflow school. So we've even thought through that process, again, construction facilities. And budget goes over to these two gentlemen in a second. But from our ed services, student services principles, we've talked through, you know, we could even separate and provide families with two different locations instead of one, outside of the utilization of Hawthorne as a possible rental.
Under that scenario, are you having specialized preschool at both locations?
Nope, I mean, Horseman would be our primary focus because we would already have a lot of the services on that campus.
Is that going, are we including in that the class that's presently we're questioning at Horse, at Hawthorne?
Correct, that would go with a city classroom over to Horseman. So there would be same-age peers on that Horseman campus. And then at El Rodeo, opening up possibly that second classroom because there's two Hawthorne city classrooms, we'd split them. And then our own classroom would go too. So we would have two preschool, one student services and one city at Horseman. And then one city at El Rodeo. So the city would technically then have access to both campuses. And then from a community members, stakeholders standpoint, in our student services, it may make it easier on student services because they'd be going to one location from an elementary standpoint. Even though I mean you'd sell for student services at both locations, that class would go with the prime class.
When you say student services, you're meaning the specialists, the providers, the OT? Does that what you mean by student services providers?
Yeah.
If you do that scenario, El Rodeo, the construction at El Rodeo would have to be, you'd have to revamp the music room and also revamp bathrooms, is that correct?
Well, then we would either choose that first grade hallway or the music room to do facilities upgrade.
Isn't that music room there on the first floor?
That's what, that would be the upgrade, is the bathroom.
It's not the room, it's just the bathroom.
Just changing the fixtures, lowering the fixtures and making access from the music room.
First grade, first grade is upstairs.
Music room, right?
First grade is up the ramp.
So you, you changed the music room.
It's upstairs.
We went to the.
Have to do work there because it's a music room.
We talked about that before, I believe.
So there'd be construction on the room and there'd be construction on the bathroom.
No, that's.
It's upstairs. It's not like a mid, mid-level, it's with third grade.
So it's construction for a room and construction for a bathroom at El Rodeo. And then at Horseman, you'd have to do construction for a room and a bathroom there. It's like double the construction for this option.
Do you know what the waitlist is for the preschool at the city level? And how many families get turned away on an annual basis? I mean, I'm sure that's changed in the last two years since we've, you know, offered TK. So I know that they've been going through the waitlist at a much faster speed because the four-year-olds are now coming to us. But I would be interested to know, because there was at one point, the families would say, oh, I've got no chance, I'm number 78. You know what I mean? I would be really interested to know.
I can find that out for you.
The demand.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, some kind of a survey to find out what the demand would be.
Yeah, what the city anticipates.
Some kind of a questionnaire for the city to find out what is the demand for this over and above what we already have from the city preschool.
I will say though, just historically, we did a TK survey to the community partnering with the city. And we all got 100 responses, not even 100 responses, 80. Yeah, and we almost doubled that size as soon as we opened up enrollment for TK.
So can we?
It's good information.
It's significant.
Yeah, but I think it's hard for us.
I'd like to finish the presentation before we start opining.
Thank you.
And then option six, obviously renting the facilities to the city of Beverly Hills for their preschool programs. Where then we would have to determine, you know, we're with business services on rentals. And then our current BHUSD preschool class, in addition to this, could include our BHUSD TK classrooms. So to offer not, so our BHUSD preschool TK could stay on that facility, rent the additional space to the city. And then that would be your option six.
So three and six are the same except six is adding
TK.
BHUSD TK classes to the, I got you.
So similar to like option one and two, where option one is really, if we were to create our own early childhood center, our own preschool program. And then option two is that we, if we're doing that, are we offering it to preschool TK? So that's the difference between option one and two.
Yeah, two and six would be similar. It's just that the city would run the preschool in option six whereas.
We would.
We would run it in option two.
Who's running the preschool in option two?
Us.
We would.
And one, so.
And one.
So one and two is BHUSD.
Yep.
Three, four, five, no, excuse me.
Yeah, six.
Three and, three, four and five.
And six.
And six are the same.
They run the preschool.
I got you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, do you have more presentation?
Nope, and that's it.
Okay.
So ultimately, okay.
All right, no, no, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, at that point, I believe that most of us in this room have the ability to then be able to have further discussion around those options. Any other further option, because again, we could probably do this in another 10 different ways.
Yeah.
Right? Is, you know, we would have to probably bring those back. But the current options in front of you, I think we could all field most questions rather.
So are you interested in getting a general consensus from the board to lay the foundation for conversations with the city? Is that?
I think that's part, but I also, I think it's important that we stress that. I think that's part, but I also, I think it's important that we stress that fall twenty-four is five minutes away. You know, like we're already gonna be starting to take course selection and recommendations, enrollment and moving in. And so there's, there's only so much bandwidth between all of us in this whole community, right? And so I think the more, the more clear we can get direction in possible selection, then DSA construction, those things gotta be approved. If it's licensure on our side, we know that there's some communities that's taken a year to receive licensure to offer a preschool program. So we would already miss the boat to open up a preschool for August of twenty-four.
Okay, so let me, let me go around, let me go around to my colleagues and let's try to get their questions answered and see if they can land on an option that they would kind of lean towards and see where we're sitting. Judy, do you wanna start?
Sure. My initial instinct is to move TK to El Rodeo and to keep the preschool run by the city at Hawthorne. I think it's just simple, fast and cost-effective.
I would say that would be an option seven.
Yeah, that.
That option here.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that per se. It looks like it could be interpreted to be here.
Judy also with one thought about that, that there could be more early childhood classes like that than DSA.
Yeah, exactly, like they can.
Right.
When I, I was there yesterday in the TK kinder area, and to me that, it's so cute. And to me that area is its own little village. Yeah, I, I call it kinda like the early childhood development village, it's perfect. And I think that it would be really natural to do such a thing. I really worry from a fiscal perspective, I could see that the twelve hundred dollars that you're charging times fifteen kids comes out to a hundred eighty thousand, but I think that there are so many other hard and soft costs that we're not taking into consideration. I would say that each classroom would probably cost us double what we would be bringing in a year, based on my, you know, just ballpark. You know, just because, for example, and Matt's not here, but his time would have to go towards those grades. Everybody here's time would have to go towards that, and I'm not seeing that the income would really, you know, cover the costs unless we went closer to like what Piper is charging, which is twenty-three hundred, or at least maybe three, four hundred more a student. From a working mom's perspective, you know, I've been a professional and I've been working really hard the last many years, and I could say the same for a lot of us. I would love if we would be able to work with the city and encourage them to offer a little bit more. I think we lose a lot of our families, because the city programming has always been three and four-year-olds. Now that we've taken over the four-year-olds, the city has more bandwidth. And if, when we leave Hawthorne, the village, they could bring in zero-year-old, one-year-old and two-year-olds and really create a daycare and preschool situation. And I think that that would cause a lot of the families to stay in Beverly Hills. So many of the families go toward the temple preschools, for example, the Presbyterian preschool, because they take the kids at age two, and a lot of the families need that. So I, that's my natural inclination from a fiscal perspective, operationally, and to be able to get going fall of next year. I think that would just be a really natural shift. I went with some of us, we went to the inauguration of Mayor Gold, and I recall that he mentioned the, you know, the city advancing the early childhood program. And I was thinking about it this morning, he also said that everything that he was promoting was something that Councilmember Friedman had also signed on to, because, you know, it's assumed that it might take a while to get some of these things going. Preschool is not just one of them, so, you know, that's my natural instinct, is to have a city-run robust preschool at Hawthorne, if they would like to do that, and to take TK with us. I think that families really wanna be able to drop their TK or off with their big kids at one school, but it would be comfortable for them to, you know, then at nine AM, drop off their three-year-olds at Hawthorne for preschool. I think fiscally, it makes a lot of sense, and I would really be interested to know if we could reach out to the city folks to see if they'd be interested in maintaining or even expanding their program at Hawthorne.
Thank you.
Where's the, where's the specialization preschool at?
Well, that's why I wasn't really sure if what I'm thinking is part of these, these options, because it, it didn't make its way into any of the op- the options.
Yeah, exactly, three.
So wouldn't that be at Horace Mann?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it says TBD, but it seems like from the standpoint of looking at it from a financial, operational and ease, that if it doesn't stay at Hawthorne, it would go to Horace Mann.
Horse Mann.
Because that's the least amount of construction required, and you could have the special ed and the city-run preschool class there, and then the city can run the rest of their preschool classes out of Hawthorne.
Yeah, exactly, so that's why it, I didn't see it specifically delineated, but I guess it's implied that that's where it would go.
Or it could be with Hawthorne, and I think we had that discussion previously about whether that makes sense, but it, what does that look like?
Yeah, I mean, I have noticed that the preschool staff and the preschool families love, love being connected to BHUSD. And so I think that if the Hawthorne option happens, meaning option, option six and three combo, well, I guess it's three, I'm sorry, option three, I think we could still welcome them to our events and still really consider them part of our community. And I think that's really what's gonna create that continuity, where those families will stick with us through twelfth grade.
Thank you, Judy. Randy?
So in this picture though, tell me a little bit more about the TK demarcation between the preschool and TK, because we're, we're using a lot of, you know, terms interchangeably. So when you guys say preschool, you mean the schooling before TK? Because as we stand now, right, we have three TK at Hawthorne, we have three TK classes at Horace Mann, right?
So preschool, we're talking age two-point-nine to age three-point-nine?
Okay, and at this time, we have only one BHUSD preschool, and that is the special ed preschool.
Yes.
And we have been using as their comparable peers, the city preschool, and so that's worked nicely at Hawthorne.
Yes.
I, I certainly think that there's a lot that goes into the special ed preschool offering, and I have felt, as Judy says, that the Hawthorne arrangement with the, the current preschool there, as well as the city counterparts, I think it, I think it seems like a nice village and it seems to work well. I think there's a lot of space there, and next year, there's gonna be a tremendous amount of space on that campus. Of course, we'll, you know, we're eventually having some administrative offices and things there, but I think it lends itself to being a wonderful place for, for preschool and for TK. And then in terms of the, the city offerings, I mean, I like the idea of the Horace Mann, like which is option three or option six. And I think in terms of, I, I understand what you're saying Judy, that there's a lot of parents who would really enjoy, you know, taking really young kids and, and letting them off. I, I feel like that's a completely different model of care for children. When you look at kids who are, you know, infants or not yet walking, I feel like that's, I don't know, I, I feel like that's a whole other larger conversation that would be potentially very difficult to have the same vision that, let's say, the city has versus a school district with all of our, you know, all of the requirements we have that are upon us as a school district versus a city in daycare. So I don't know, I see that that division, I think they're very different areas. So I would be more into looking just at our continuation of preschool TK and, you know, offering it from a school perspective and not so much as like a daycare situation, and then.
But do you wanna offer a BHUSD preschool?
Yes, I do, but I, I guess when we say daycare, and you mean like kids who aren't really at all, you know, pre-ademic things, but yeah.
Forget about daycare, but do you wanna offer a BHUSD for two-point-nine to three-point-nine year olds?
I do, I do, but other things to talk about, I guess if I had to choose one option at this time, I like option, option number one, but I do think that, and this is just more of a granular, a granular thought, there are a lot of kids, of course, I know that by law, they're required to have a nap, you guys have to offer a nap, right? Is it, it's a long day, you know? There's a lot of kids who just will not nap, and I really would not want people to say that they have to keep their kids there, because they paid the money. I would love it without punishment, you know, you can leave it one if you want to, or your kid can stay there, but that's a whole other matter. You know, to give that flexibility to parents.
But that's what, that's what.
Is that what goes on?
Yeah, because for example, when my younger one was in the city program, when she first started, she was still napping, so I just let the teachers know, and so they would release her to me at noon, which was like a natural break time.
Exactly.
So, I mean, and you find that a lot of the preschools, they offer a nine to twelve option, and then a nine to two or four option for, you know, the families that can't or won't pick up. But can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So in terms of financials, like for example, and I understand that you're interested in BHUSD option one.
Right.
So how do you wanna pay for it?
For option one? I'm not so convinced that the soft cost would be that cost prohibitive. I mean, obviously there'd be a lot more than just the staffing costs that you're saying.
Like for example, okay, when I look at option one staffing needs.
Yep.
The, the costs, the twelve hundred dollars a month per child with, with fifteen students in a classroom, covers the first two items only, am I right? I'm interpreting that correctly? So then, so it, it, the families would cover the cost of the teachers and the, and the IAs, then? And then is it number of item three-two, the full-time special education preschool teacher? Does that get covered, that's separate funds, right?
That's already part of the resource.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I also wanna say though, just so that we're all on the same page, that, that this is, you know, right now, you know, the preschool program is, is operated by the city. So that there, you know, there's, there would be assumptions made that BHUSD would be taking over the preschool program. So I just wanna make sure I'm clear that we haven't had that conversation, that's not true.
Right, and I had a big conversation.
Right, right, that, that's.
I would not want to make that.
That's a question that I have here.
From a salary standpoint, is that just including an annual salary, it's not including like long-term benefits and pension and, and all the other costs that go with the R and P's down the road?
That's why I really do think that each class is gonna cost double, maybe minimum.
Maybe twelve hundred. I, I saw that twelve hundred was lower than the Manhattan Beach one, it was slightly lower. And I thought, I, it occurred to me that maybe it should be higher than twelve hundred to cover, you know, additional.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, like is, does Manhattan, is Manhattan Beach basic aid like we are? I don't know how they get paid from the government, but knowing that we would not be getting any more dollars and cents for this.
Right, good point.
I, I really strongly believe that the one hundred eighty is just the cream of it, and that there, here we go. So there would then be a school site administrator, an office staff, a business service staff, a cafeteria staff, playground staff, custodian staff, health clerk, service providers, which maybe is already the service providers in your pre-existing budget, security.
All on us.
Utilities, well, we pay the utilities, but you understand where I'm going with this. And so.
But don't we get funding for the special ed class that is at?
Just the one, yeah, just the one.
Only for the special ed.
Only, all, all.
And it's partial funding, right?
It's partial. Of funding for their class.
Yeah.
For their specifically preschool funds.
Yeah.
It basically covers the teacher's.
So then, for example, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve line items.
Right.
And the twelve hundred dollars a month is at best covering only the first two line items.
Right.
So I really think that if we're gonna give option one any serious consideration, we really first need to figure out where, where, how are we paying for items four through twelve?
Okay, thank you, great questions. Rochelle?
Well, I don't have little kids, so I'm coming from a little bit different perspective, so to speak. First of all, what is driving this change right now? Is it the city who wants to get rid of preschool and they want us to take it over?
No, no.
Or is that, is there any, any, well, not, I don't agree with it's not, because I've heard many times, people in administration of the city saying, this preschool belongs to the school. And I think that this is their attempt, I'm being very honest, to put it there now, because I, I think they see this change in our structure, we're going to El Rodeo, we have a school that's gonna open up, and this is our chance now to bring the early childhood program to Beverly Hills and take it away from us. I'm not disagreeing with that, I think that that is something that is causing this, and I'm being very honest, that's just my intuition, but I'm not too sure it's not correct.
Yeah, so I can, I can share with you that there haven't been any conversations at all about us taking over their preschool program. We've not had any discussions, so, so I'm, I'm not convinced that they want us to do that.
Well, I'm not as convinced of that as you are, Dr. Bremer.
I believe in you. Mayor Gold has several times said partnering with the district for early childhood, but not turning it over to the district.
Well, but he's mentioned, this, you know, you give an inch, you give a little bit and they take more. And I have the feeling that this is possibly what's gonna happen here. I'm being very, it's just my own feelings.
That's, that's why we can't make assumptions today.
And that's why I'm not ready to make a decision today either, and that's, so, and then the other thing, I agree with Judy, I don't know how you can possibly hope that this would vegetarian-wise be sustaining with what you're going to be collecting from the kids, so that, or from the parents, for the program. Although I think, I, I think it's wonderful that we could possibly offer an early childhood program for the parents of our community who need this desperately and would find this a way to speak up connected. I like that idea, it's not that I don't like it, it's just that I think it would be a wonderful idea, but I, I just don't know how you do it without it impacting our regular BHUSD budget. That was my only concern. I have no problem if, when we decide or whatever to do, we're going to have this wonderful space at Hawthorne, the south area, that lends itself to whatever we wanna do with it. I mean, leave the north side alone, because that's another issue altogether. I don't know that you've made any consideration for administrative space as in this particular plan at any time. You know, you're gonna have to add administration there, you're gonna have teachers, principals, you're gonna have to have people to run, nurses and so on. I don't see that in the, as it's mentioned, I don't see it any kind of possibility in, in that floor plan, so to speak. And as I say, if we were to partner with the city, which is a thought, who's really gonna run the program? The city or Beverly Hills? And are we gonna get into problems between that by having this co-mingling of who's running the program? I think that's something that has to be worked out. I, I see no reason why Hawthorne can't be used for the citywide, but then again, that impacts the JPA, I don't know how all of that will be figured in also, because they're gonna say, well, this is, we can use this space, so that's part of that. I don't know, I'm just throwing these thoughts out, because they're on my mind right now.
Can I clarify, since that's on your mind, let me just clarify that with the JPA, the agreement is that the two sections of preschool run by the city, that they have access to our special ed preschool. So that's, that is.
What do you mean by access to our special ed preschool?
So, so peer, with the peers of, of the kids in the preschool program, they, it's in the JPA that those, two sections, which is what we currently have, are, that, that they, they work with the kids that are in that, in our section, in our special.
That's the prime, that, what the program is that?
That's our special education preschool class that's currently at Hawthorne.
Special education, so that's there, based on the fact that they can co-mingle with the regular EC.
Those are their same age peers.
So, but we have ran in, now that brings up another issue, we ran into the problem that you brought up and that we discovered, we can't leave that class there without, because that class, the school's moving, and they're part of the school.
Part of our school system.
Even though the early childhood is not.
Correct.
I don't know how we, and that, and that might be why you decided maybe to take that program over to Horace Mann, I don't know.
Or, or.
Well, whatever, I mean, but that is such an ideal space right now, I know that I've seen the program, I love that early childhood program that's run there. I did not realize, I mean, I know about the special ed case, but that, that is a situation that's, because we talked about El Rodeo and this and redoing that also, so that's part of this whole picture that we have to consider. So those are just some of my original thoughts, I'm not actually in a position right now, I mean, I just need so many questions answered, that I couldn't possibly give a, a strong direction at this point, other than the fact that what I've said already.
See, Dustin, you give us six options and you have seven opinions. Thank you. Chris Wilson.
Well, the way I look at it is in a few different ways. One is just from a program. Well, the way I look at it is in a few different ways, one is just from a program standpoint, so, right now we have, um, you know, TK is already planned and is in place. And what really we, when we just started talking about preschool, like where should preschool go, um, when we were moving Hawthorne? And, you know, what's the impact of that? So we know we need, um, previously we talked about, we need to move a special ed, the special ed preschool and the city-run preschool. To one of the, either Hawthorne, I mean, to El Rodeo or to Horace Mann. We knew when we, when we talked about El Rodeo, it was, you know, it was gonna be really costly to do that. And it was gonna be reworking space that we've already done and that we're all ready to move into, so we asked to look at, can we do this at Hawthorne? And it sounds like you found a solution for doing it at Hawthorne with the library and.
Or Horace Mann.
Excuse me, so that special ed class and that city one, that one city-run preschool class can move to Horace Mann. And of all the scenarios we looked at, other than for those two classes to stay at Hawthorne, which would be no construction cost at either of Horace Mann or El Rodeo. Um, if that's not an option because it's optically, it looks bad to not take that, a city, at least one city-run preschool class to, uh, Horace Mann with the special ed. Then that's the least impact in terms of cost and construction is to move them to Horace Mann. So that seems like that solves that issue, so then the question is, where do we put any and all other preschool classes? And we've talked about, here we have this opportunity, we have, we have Hawthorne and it's in many ways already set up. From a, you know, a logistics standpoint, the classrooms, the bathrooms, the playgrounds, for the most part are all there. And the city can come in and run the preschool programs, the city-run preschool programs there. And they can have a lot of space so that there's a high demand in the city, they can meet the needs of more people in the family. To have a city-run preschool that happens to be at our amazing facility, which is Hawthorne, which is in a great neighborhood, which will have security. And ultimately, we wanna remove our, our district office there, so it will feel very much, even though it's a city-run program. It will feel very much part of our BHUSD family, cause it's on a BHUSD campus that has been, you know, is one of the oldest. And it's in a really safe and secure area, and it causes, um, you know, that, that's meeting the need for the city residents to have more preschool funds. The city can run it, so then it's not putting a toll on our admin and our construction and, you know, all of the bandwidth that it would take for us to run that program. We wouldn't have to take that on, we would be using, they would be using our space. In terms of having a preschool only be there, I think it's great, cause then it allows more space at the elementary schools, ultimately down the road. And I, I just think so from a financial standpoint, from an operational standpoint, it makes the most sense to have the city run the preschool at Hawthorne. And to leave TK where it is, because TK is already in their spaces, and if down the road.
You mean at El Rodeo?
At El Rodeo and at, and at Horace Mann. And down the road, if we find that we just have been so much demand in our schools, that we wanna find more room in our elementary schools, then we can look at, then we can relook at our space. At Hawthorne and see if moving TK makes sense there. I think it's more complicated, as someone said, to have the district running TK there and the city running, uh, preschool there. If down the road, who knows when, five years after TK's very settled in and we've expanded TK and El Rodeo's settled in. We, we decide that it makes sense for us to run the preschool, well, we'll already be sitting there, we would just be making agreement with the city that now operationally, we're gonna take it over. And then at that point, you could say, and also we might wanna move our TK there, but that could be way down the road. Like, I would let the city in the fall have that space and open up preschool there, it's already set up and ready to go in many ways. And the only construction you really have to do is what you have to do to accommodate our special ed and our, what, our city-run preschool to Horace Mann, which is your option three, I forget which one.
Could you, let me ask you something, could you have another preschool, you leave the preschool that's at Hawthorne at Hawthorne, but develop another preschool class.
Yeah.
At Horace Mann, where the, so we'd have them with the special ed kids.
You mean the city-run preschool class? Either way, it's a city-run preschool class.
Yeah, either way, but I'm just saying that leave the two preschool that are there, maybe even open up a few more. But move a preschool class to Horace Mann so that we can accommodate the special ed class that's, that I have that special.
At Horace Mann.
At Horace Mann.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
Whatever question.
That we move the, our special, we have a city, and we have a district special ed preschool, correct Laura?
Correct.
And so that preschool needs to have a city, a, a city-run preschool with it.
Preschool class with it.
So that is where they found that solution, where it can move to Horace Mann.
Yeah.
With the most minimal of all the scenarios we've given us, in terms of the cost, in terms of construction. So I would move them to Horace Mann and then let the city do all the rest of the preschool classes that they, that are city-run, it's all city-run at Hawthorne. It's their expense to run it, it's their responsibility.
What about this preschool class that you're moving to Horace Mann?
City.
City.
That's a city-run preschool class, but it goes with the special ed as we talked about before, it has to go with special ed.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
But unless down the road, you decide that that special ed class and that city-run class would be better suited at Hawthorne with all the rest of the kids that are in preschool.
Well, that's where they're now though, right?
You can't do that though, because the, 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 the problem is that the special ed class is public and it has to be where there is.
Your choice.
Right, but Laura identified is that the special ed class needs to move with the rest of the district.
Well, that's if we bring the TK over.
Regardless, it has to run with the district.
But I'm, a hundred percent following you, Mary, maybe I can.
Am I now, am I missing something?
No, no.
Keep going.
So I think it's the, the path of least resistance and it serves the needs of most of our, even more of our community. And it's the least taxing on our operations.
But is there.
So programmatically, sorry, excuse me, I just wanna put this on the, on the table. Yes, that meets the, the ability for us to have the students in, in our classroom to have same HPs, but programmatically, it reduces the number of classes. Cause right now we have two classes that we can, so we have approximately eighteen students in the program that need to go through that class at some point during the day. We have two classes that we can do that, we're gonna not be trying to do that in one class, which may impact that ability to do.
I thought we only had one class.
But it meets, it meets the requirements.
It meets the requirement.
Oh, two cities.
It meets the law, the legal requirements, so we're compliant with the law.
So there's compliance in this program, because you can be compliant with the law, but you cannot have a good program.
Right.
Got you.
So that's the piece that I'm bringing up.
Why, why he needs to.
We don't have, we don't have room to add Horace Mann to both of the preschools, the city preschools.
I don't know the answer to that question, I'd have to look at the map.
And is there no way to preserve the library at Horace Mann? It would be a little bit of a shame as far as I'm concerned and I would be in.
They wanna move it anyway, they say.
Yeah, it's just being moved.
What's that?
They wanna move it anyway, they're moving it.
Where will it be moved to that change in the, that.
You're moving it anyway, can you tell us about that, the move?
We, we've had discussions numerous times, I'm looking at, Horace Mann originally was built as a K, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the design was well before.
You have a gym there that they, a locker room.
Yeah, but even before conversations of us even doing reconfiguration, right?
Yeah.
So there's a, there's, um, additional larger classrooms that were built really for sixth, seventh and eighth grade students. And other specialist programs, especially in the B building on the second floor off to the right-hand side, we can reconfigure, reshape. And again, just in the digital era, you know, we'll still have our physical, um, library books and utilizing possibly one of the labs. Or moving one of our specialist teachers into a different space, but we have the big kid classrooms at abundance across the district, right? Like, we're trying to keep them up in through those, it's the littles, because those are the only ones that are ed code, that have to be.
First floor.
On the floor, being able to evacuate, don't get trampled, don't get pushed.
Yeah.
But if I understand correctly, the number four option was moving the two preschools and the one special ed class to Horace Mann.
Yep.
So that is still the same impact, it's the library and the bathroom.
Correct, we would have to be able to split the library in half, put the two city preschool programs into the library. Um, and then look for additional instructional space where we possibly would have to add a bathroom for the special education students by the prime program. Which I won't say room numbers or names at this point.
Right, so I guess if, either way, you have to do that, whether it's one city-run preschool class or two.
Well, but, and I, I'm with you with the program, out of transparency, if you were to move one city program and one BHUSD program. We would split the library and run a preschool out of that library space. And then relocate the library.
But it would need to be separate classrooms.
Yeah.
Right, but if it was, if you had two, the two preschools and, and one, then you would, yeah, isn't it the same?
The non-class. Well, we just would have to put the R class in the other space and then there's, there's not.
That's your number four option.
So then, if you.
So I would suggest.
Don't you also have a problem with the playground space, if you do something like that, then too, as some, as to the equipment and stuff like that for kids that are that age on the playground?
So there's a space in that building that we can adapt for that, that's in the kindergarten.
Right.
But, but I do, that's a great question though, I think we, we would have to make some adaptation, like, you know, for Horace Mann or.
But in either location, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and if you were to do option five, it's not ideal program, from programs trying according to Laura, because you'd have one at each school.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't have the two in one place.
A hundred percent.
So if we're really trying to meet the, I mean, the most ideal scenario is Horace Mann has two preschools and one special ed preschool. Which is the two city preschools and one district special ed, that's what you're saying Laura?
That would be optimal, yes.
And if it's not that, then it's at least one, and the rest, and then all the rest of the city-run preschools would be at Horace Mann, I mean, at Hawthorne. That gives you more, more, uh, pres, pres, I mean, you have more options to have, uh, more, you can grow the program, the city can grow the program at Hawthorne. And we can minimize the impact for us. And, but I would make an argument really is that ultimately, it would be so much better for all, all the preschools to be at Hawthorne. But I understand Laura, you, you're concerned in the beginning to not have it that way, but maybe down the road, those two would move over there once that's more established.
So, okay, um, I have a lot of questions I need answered before I can opine on this. Craig, how many TKs are currently at Horace Mann?
Three.
Okay, and your projection is to keep it at three for next year?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, and, and you have three as well, right, so. In the move to El Rodeo, you're taking your planned out three TK, four kindergarten, something like that?
I have seven spaces for all the people.
You're taking the three to Horace Mann.
In that, in that hallway.
In the B building in El Rodeo, there's seven spaces for all the people, that's it.
Okay, so you're, so you're tapped out there.
For meaning first floor spaces.
Those that are appropriate sizes, appropriate bathrooms, have appropriate access, need everything, there's currently plans for a four kindergarten and a three TK, but that's it.
That's it.
So however you wanna manipulate that, so what's happening, if that means that, whatever that looks like, it's a standard classroom.
I mean, based on, even on the, the, um, demographic report, on the high projections, we're still decreasing. So I don't think there's a clear and present danger in bursting at the seams in our TKK. Um, what I'm concerned about is if we do, if we do what Mrs. Wells is suggesting, uh, which is two city preschools and one, and our special ed at Horace Mann. Um, I don't think it's as easy as just throwing up a wall and adding a bathroom, I think that's, that's a major.
But less, it's less than if you go to El Rodeo.
It's, it's, no, I just, I just.
It's the least of the.
Our history with construction is always the paths of most resistance in these preschools.
And, and the scenarios, that's the least.
I, 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 I agree, but what it does allow us.
Unless you need them at home.
And the place motion.
Yeah.
What it does allow us is to keep this, all of the things that Judy was referring to that was not covered in that cost, the other line items, under the roof of Horace Mann. And so there's no additional need for, you know, health and administration and.
Offices.
Uh, janitorial services, that all stays within the school, so.
Health and benefits.
So I, I, I'll get to that in a sec, the, what I'm concerned about is, is, is there clearly room to do this at Horace Mann, moving the library? Is there a place for the library? If you move the library and add the, the three preschool classes that we're talking about, the city's and our special ed, is Horace Mann at that point closed? Are you closed for business, are you all maxed out, or do you still have room to grow?
There's no, there's no room for littles at Horace Mann.
Right, that's why.
Past the twenty, the max of our CBA and its current standard of twenty-one.
So we would have two preschools from, from the city, our special ed, three TK and four K at Horace Mann?
Yeah, with, with, with the integration of the two bathrooms in the wall, well, the wall, and again, I, I doubt that, cause that's why Will's here.
So I think.
I just put a wall here.
I think, I think what, what this allows us.
We can do it on a weekend, Dustin.
Yeah. I think what this allows us is, based on the demographics, one would say it's a relatively safe bet that you're not gonna burst.
There's a new one.
Right, you'll be at capacity, but you won't burst. We will know that we have Hawthorne as a fail-safe, right? If we have to move preschool and TK to Hawthorne, we could do that so K through five can grow.
Or one preschool.
Okay, I wanna be, I wanna be clear about that, right? Or, or one preschool, but I don't think.
The important thing to notice is exactly like Laura said. In the A building, the main building, we're tapped out class-wise, that's where the littles are.
Right.
If, we have plenty of rooms in the B building, actually Adventure Camp through the JPA, they have three rooms that we don't even use anymore. Which works out for JPA great. We're tapping out for littles, but another thing to consider is remember our playground, we don't have a littles play space.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's huge.
Right, which, which for me leans toward moving all of preschool and TK to Hawthorne.
Problem.
Yes.
Of course, that opens up.
And TK?
Yes.
Eventually.
That, that, not eventually, now, um, cause it cures your, your, it cures a lot of other things. But it also, what it does is it helps, you have administration and support staff, not just for one special ed classroom. Because that's really what it would be for if you don't move TK. And what that gives you guys is a chance to grow in, you know, your, your, your primary grades at, at both schools. You'll have room to grow if you do that. I'm not opposed to kind of feeling it out and see, but you're concerned about the play space, so that is a concern. I, I'm, from the beginning, my original note on this is, I don't think the city's giving up the preschool program. And I don't wanna get into the business of preschool, we are trying, we are trying to move forward academically as a district.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Right, right.
If we add that to our plate, that's a mistake.
Yeah.
It's the one data.
But I was suggesting.
They already have the license, they already have, they know how to run it, and we have space for them.
Right, I agree.
And we have space for them to grow, so why would we?
Like, they can, I think that's just such a never brainer that they go to Hawthorne and they run it. I, about moving TK now, I'm a little concerned about, then you're having two different run programs there. Uh, ideally, I would move preschool, all of preschool, including the, the special ed preschool and those two classes to Hawthorne. Because I think it's gonna be where, it's best for all the preschools.
To Horace Mann.
Can't, you need a special ed class there.
I'm saying that.
To Horace Mann?
Horace Mann.
Can't leave it.
I meant, I meant the Horace Mann classes to Hawthorne and all preschool.
Horace Mann.
You can, I think that the issue was more Laura felt like you, it, the optics could be bad, that you left behind, uh.
I think there's a legal battle there.
There, there are implications to, for leaving one classroom of students with special needs out of sight and it looks, it does not, it looks like it's a segregated site.
It looks like they got.
That's why, that's why.
So that's why a minimum of the special, one special ed and one preschool must go to Hawthorne, I mean, Horace Mann.
Yeah, all Horace Mann.
That's why, well, and that's why I'm saying, I don't wanna leave Hawthorne for one city preschool class.
No, but, let's ask them if they wanna grow.
That's, that. Yes, but we need to have that conversation with them to see if they plan on growing.
You mean the city?
Yeah, the city plan on growing.
Yes, I mean, they could consolidate if they do.
I would prefer, I would prefer all three of the preschool classes to be at Horace Mann. The question is the play space, and the question is, if we're putting up a wall and putting in a bathroom, is the play space a difficult thing to, to tackle at that point? Is, is that, is that a non-starter, we can't have the play space for them? Or, um, it, it, see, for me, everything keeps going back to move preschool and TK to Hawthorne. That's, that's what I said, I know what you're saying about leaving, we're not leaving people behind, we are, we are changing the district to optimize.
No, no, from the special ed, you're talking about the special ed class.
No, I'm talking about, you mentioned about TK classes.
When I said we behind, I meant the special ed.
No, just the.
Okay, and you, cause you had said TK earlier.
But that's the, it gives the impression that we're leaving.
No, I, that's why they all go together, they all go together.
So are you proposing item six?
Um, is, is that, yeah, I think it's, I think it's six, um, but it, it's with the, um.
It's, it's a hybrid.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a hybrid.
But then, no, a question for you, if we have our TK, so it's, it would be city-run preschool.
Uh-huh.
At Hawthorne.
And district-run TK.
Plus our district-run TK.
And special ed preschool.
I got you, my question for you is, for example, for, so we would have them both operate at the same time like we do now? But we still would have the extra expense of office admin and so on and so forth.
You you do, you you would have that expense.
Yeah.
But a couple of things to remember is if the district offices move over there, you're gonna be taking some of that with you. Because you're gonna have, then you're gonna have your 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 janitorial staff, you'll have staff, you you, it'll, it's not gonna be perfect, but you're gonna, you're gonna bring some of that with you. But that's why I would, I would ask to look at a cost analysis. But the other thing, of course, I I would ask is because it's not in my wheelhouse, you know, we sit here at a certain thirty-five thousand foot level, but I would turn to both Craig and Sarah and say, what do you guys think?
Before you ask that.
You think, you know, I'd like to know.
Oh, I don't.
I want to make one clarification, I just wanna understand one thing, what you're suggesting is that we move TK to Hawthorne? The BHUSD TK to Hawthorne with the city preschool, by doing that, then the special ed and the two preschool classes would stay at Hawthorne?
Yeah.
We already have TK.
Yeah, they're they're already.
Yeah, they would stay at Hawthorne. Right, we already have TK.
Yeah, in fact, all you're doing.
So if TK was at Hawthorne. Wait, I should be sure.
But how about Horstmann TK?
But if TK.
That's all we're moving, actually.
TK is at Hawthorne.
That's all we would be doing.
Yeah.
Then you feel comfortable having the special ed.
Oh, well, they already have TK, why are we moving this?
We're gonna centralize it.
Well, that's nice, I guess, but it's only TK on the district.
Yeah, well, I mean.
That's not, that's Hawthorne.
That's a good idea.
Do you, I don't wanna put you guys on the spot, do you have anything to add that we may be overlooking from our question?
Okay. I just wanna clarify. Got it.
You go first.
Well, the only concern that I have as we're like figuring out if everyone into Horstmann and Hawthorne is that we're obligated to take all of our kids, all of our kids. And so while we have only a certain number of preschool special education kids right now, anything is possible in the next year or two. And while we're like totally full in TK at my side, are you totally full of TK?
No.
No, he's got the one extra class now, right?
We could expand at some point and, and one of the things that happened is that his kinder expanded post the beginning of the school year, so we're like.
That's kinder.
We have four spots available district wide for TK right now.
Wow.
So I just, that's my only concern is like when trying to fit more places, smaller places, like, I would love to be able to take absolutely everyone who's at Hawthorne to El Rodeo.
But in sections, we have four, eight sections of kinder.
Like I would love to, to say like everyone's come, and I, but I know that that's not the reality, so when we're talking about fitting so many people into play spaces, that's where it becomes like, we don't know what's gonna happen. Last year, we had way more preschool kids. It could bump up, like, anything is possible because we have an obligation to our community.
So, and can I just add, because I I think that, you know, when we think back to some previous conversations we've had, is that we we want, this is the group that we're trying to attract to our school district. So that we don't keep declining enrollment, because as we know, we're having problems, you know, running everything that we have at our high school. And so, you know, thinking about this early, this early childhood center is also a way, as we've indicated, that this is a a place where it could be a pretty special place for early childhood, our earliest and youngest learners, that you wanna come here because it's a, it's a specialized place for a play-based instruction in an environment where it's, for example, preschool and also TK, in in an environment where that's what's, it's a specialized place for these kids. And there's plenty of play space, it's easy to drop off kids in the morning and pick them up. I mean, if if we're trying to look at getting young families, having a special place to call an earlyhood, early childhood center, is a way to be able to promote people, that becomes a thing in in a lot of districts. It's their early childhood center becomes the place where people wanna go to school.
I would say this, I think that early education, if from a developmental standpoint, and you guys can speak to that, it makes sense to me that you would have preschool and TK together. It just makes sense that that, from a program standpoint. So I see what you're saying there, I think when you look at that scenario, if costs were not a factor and and everything, parents and what change and everything else. If if you were starting from scratch, you'd say TK and preschool together there would be great, including the special ed and and that, and especially if there's more kids that become part of that program, there's room for them to grow and they have access to TK and preschool kids. And it gives you opportunity to potentially grow, to have daycare, and that's really something that's, the city can run that part, the district can run the TK. I would wanna know, what is the cost operationally to have this, the district have our TK program running there? What are the additional costs to do that? And and also, how do you run the program and the oversight of the program for TK? And like what, like a breakdown of that? And then depending how, I think also you have to think about the community, there's gonna be a lot of parents that are gonna go, wait a minute.
Yeah.
I'm not having my TK child not at El Rodeo now, I'm, there, I think you're gonna have some pushback there, so just like you had with reconfiguration, so that's another consideration about talking about that. I mean, they will be at each of those schools in the next year or two because the programs are very short and they will be there. But I think that's a change that's, you have to acknowledge that there'll be pushback on. So it's, what is the cost really to do that and run that program with, and it's not just the cost to do it, but what's the bandwidth cost also? To to have staff and running that TK program there, who's overseeing that? And then secondly, I would compare that to the cost of having TK and Horstmann, I mean TK, a preschool and.
Preschool. I know what you're saying.
That scenario at Horstmann, and the rest of the city just runs their preschool program there as the first step, and then maybe, then, once you get that set up, then maybe you look at talking about having TK moved there and the district runs it. I, like, in the planning of this space, I think you have to think, where do you want it to go? But I think those two scenarios are the best two scenarios that we should narrow it down.
I think, Mary, you're absolutely right, and I think we took seven options and put them down to two now. And I think we need, we need to go back and get these questions answered, I I I'm fully in support of that. So colleagues, just let me reiterate, watch your placards. Is that, one option is is the city's preschool, two of them, and our special ed, move to Horstmann, the library is divided, and a and a code bathroom is put in. We'd also have to look at a play area outside, correct?
And what that is.
Okay, what we're, and what the cost and time is, hey, we dropped a wellness center in a year, I think we could.
So you're talking about item five? Option three.
Whatever option it is, the new option, whatever it is.
So it's three and six, three and six.
Yeah, okay.
So, and then the other one is is moving all preschool and TK to Hawthorne, what the what the cost with that, that would be? And I know, I know there's some carryover costs in moving administration that we shouldn't be able to cover, that we have included, and then there'll be additional costs.
And they.
That we have to look into.
And then there's the community, like, literature.
Yes, but but the other thing we need to.
And also the city's desire, like there has to be that.
Yeah, does the city want, does the city wanna stay in the preschool business, is that part of their vision of early childhood?
That's the question. I don't, so yes, if you start running preschool, so I think the question is, do they wanna centralize at Hawthorne, not, do we wanna run?
Maybe as opposed to Horst.
We move those two classrooms, we're also making a.
I, there, you know, I think the city's gonna be happy, the question is, do you mean, do they wanna expand their preschool, are they interested in expanding it?
Or they can centralize, the the other parks can all.
Well, I think if they wanted to expand.
We're not centralizing weeks up to Horstmann and then open then.
From Roxbury Park and Coldwater Park to Hawthorne, then they can centralize their city preschools here.
Well, those are the ones that could do it to Horstmann.
Or just have more.
Yeah, or just, or just add them, that's, they might just wanna add them, and that's, that's, I would like to know that, I mean, I think that's a good thing to know.
So they have the satellites, which is good for chat, they get, it's good for families that.
Right, that's a conversation to, and I just, from a historical standpoint, when Bob Wonder, like, was mayor, we were, we started these conversations when we had these liaisons, remember Noah?
Yep. Yeah.
So I think the city is very much interested in doing this, like having Hawthorne as a possible place for preschool for them to run.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's all good. Laura, I see your hand, I just wanted to add, the other thing, Mary, you said, thinking about the community effect of this, I think about the educational programmatic effect of this. So we also wanna lean toward what would be an advantage. What we forget, I, there's so much time being put into all this, and we always have to remember that preschool, TK and kindergarten are not requirements. You know, you go to those by choice, then now the state has made TK a requirement to offer, but it's not a requirement to attend. Only first grade, you don't go to school in first grade.
Well, it's by age, it's by age, right?
But it, yes, but it's, but usually, you're truant by that point, at that point, but so, so everything we're talking about with early childhood is optional choices for parents, not for us, but for parents.
It's by age six. Yeah, it's true, we have, for example, there are some families that would have been eligible for TK, but they chose to keep their four-year-old.
Yep.
In their, for example, Temple Emanuel, it's not a lot of them, but there's a small handful.
Right. Yeah.
I also would be, two questions, the first is, we offered TK last year, so when we talk about our numbers going up, our numbers went up by about two hundred, two oh seven this year. So are are we saying that it's because of TK, or it's maybe a combination of things, because we had TK last year too?
Grandparent.
It's a combination.
It's a combination, we we expand TK, we have four sections.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have sixty-eight grandparent permits, so you add those numbers together, that approximately, and plus some new new enrollments, that together constitutes that two oh seven.
Yeah. Last year we had.
This year we had sixty-eight new grandparent?
No, total.
Total, so last year we had fifty-three.
Right, so from last year to this year is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
One of them giving overbeams.
Right.
Got you, so we went from fifty-three to fifty-three plus to get to sixty-eight?
Yeah. Right. Yes.
I'm with you, but the, and when you talk about the future in the high school, I mean, I really do genuinely believe that in January of twenty twenty-five, when we have our front lawn, that's gonna have an impact on the high school, and in the spring of twenty twenty-five, when we have our performing arts wing, B three and B four come online. I think it's gonna make a big impact, I really do.
And ever feel.
Yeah.
Definitely make an impact, definitely will.
Yeah.
Laura, you wanted to add something?
So I I just wanted to put this on the board's mind, we, I wanna talk about bang for your buck, because whether we move our classes to Hawth, Horstmann, or if we bring TK to Hawthorne. What are we, what is the best outcome for our students for the money that we're going to spend? Technically, we're only moving the TK classes from Horstmann to Hawthorne.
Yeah.
Everyone else is already at Hawthorne, we have the playground, we have the, we have the the classrooms, the students are familiar with it. I want you to also think about it, and this is where I'm pushing back on the programmatic side. We're thinking preschool, TK, but there's, there's a continuum, and Sarah and I can, Sarah can attest to this, there are a lot of kids sometimes that are in preschool, that go to TK and go, ah, nope. Come on back over to preschool, because you're not quite developmentally ready. You have that continuum of options available if they're all in the same place. We can do that at Horstmann as well, but again, I I want you to think about it from my hat, as a person who's trying to manage instruction, manage staffing, manage, making sure that we have a quality program. Can't put, there, at some point, a classroom becomes saturated, and it affects the the quality of the instruction. So if we have more classes, to be able to then put our kids who need additional support into those classes, it's a better program.
Right, that's the Hawthorne more.
Everybody gets.
So that's number six, the hybrid.
Sorry, I want.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I just wanna put that on your mind, it's not only numbers, if we're talking about teaching and instruction.
So I think.
I would, I would.
I I, that's what I need to hear.
I would agree with that.
And you're fortifying at least our.
So we're gonna spend money, but how are we gonna spend it in the best way?
So we'll find it, so we've asked to come back now to do a little more vetting on some questions for the city, and for the numbers on on costs, if we did the, that, I mean, that's what I envisioned from the beginning, is that it all goes to.
It would be like if all the city here went to one class, versus if those two went to a class, you three went to one, you two went to one, you two went to one, and we went to another class. And then we're able to be taught and have more individual and individual.
And hopefully, we can still offer the city the opportunity to expand at the same time.
The space.
Yes.
Which would also help our program.
Review the two options that you're thinking of.
The review, the two options, once again, the special ed preschool and the city's preschool goes to Horstmann. That would require construction and looking into outdoor play space, because they don't have any for that.
The three sections, that total.
Three sections.
Three sections, two classes of one special ed.
The other option is basically leaving everything at Hawthorne and moving the three TK classes from Horstmann to Hawthorne, where we already have.
Three TK from Horstmann to Hawthorne, that's what.
Man to Hawthorne, where we already have all of, everything we need. The only thing, we're gonna look at the cost analysis in running that, because then it becomes a fifth campus for us to keep running.
Yeah.
And you have material.
But if we can negotiate with the city, overall, we may be able to subsidize some of those costs.
And really honestly, with the district offices moving there.
Right, because that's what we looked at in the other JPA.
We have to find out what the city.
Right.
What's that?
And we have to keep in mind.
It could be the side.
And and some of those costs, I'll be able to do this, some of those costs are going to occur anyway with, because with preschool being at Hawthorne, you're still gonna have your custodial costs, you're still gonna have your security costs, so we'll be able to show that, that there's some common costs in both options, but I think the charge is pretty clear for us to cross that out.
The prime class that's at Craig, that's at your school?
At Horstmann.
At Horstmann, that is special ed?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
What age or what grades does that serve?
That class serves K through five, moderate to severe.
Wow, that's a big range, so those are pretty severe guys, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's probably the most impacted on the special ed class.
And what is the enrollment, Laura?
That's a great question, Dr. Brady. We're currently.
It's your high.
We're, we're, we're at like fourteen kids right now, fourteen kids.
That's a lot for very impacted.
I like to keep it at a mass of twelve.
What's that enrollment rate?
Prime program.
What'd you say?
I like to keep it no more than twelve.
Yeah.
But because.
But of course, we cannot enroll, not enroll students when they come.
Right, but but one thing I want you to consider though is that, like, but that could be then two sections.
We may need to open that. Correct.
Next year that we need another classroom for.
Yeah, so it could be like Katie who is three and then fourth and fifth, anything like that.
They need more.
It could be, yeah.
So they have, the prime class now has its general ed counterparts, and does it have to be, even if they're not cognitively at at grade five, their counterparts have to be K through five?
So, so if you wanna go with the technicality of the law and the intent of the law, yes, because the law says same age here.
Not mental age, yeah.
It's not, it's not your instructional level, it's not your your intellectual level, it's that your chronological age, so they have their years there, and they and they have access to them via specials, via going into classes to participate in, you know, circle or circle time or other instruction, or even even academic instruction, and they can move throughout the campus to do that, and they do.
Right, so that, so that class never could be moved to Hawthorne if Hawthorne just stays in early education, it just can't.
No, because they don't have access to their same age years.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, well, I think this was very healthy.
Can we talk about one thing, just now the hybrid model, when, just speaking to the, I'm gonna call it the hero village, okay? And I really like that name, whoever came up with it, so we've got one. Was that you, who came up with that? The hero village?
No, I'm giving someone a hard time, sorry.
Whoever came up with it, I think it's adorable, I just wanna make sure we actually will have enough to bring the three TK from Horstmann over, because we've got.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, we will, because there's the kinder.
You'll have more. The ones that say K would essentially be now TK.
The three from Horstmann, uh, they're indicated here and right.
They're indicated here, because the three Schmidt, Pomerantz and Smith are the current TK teachers.
No, that's a current one, sorry, those are current.
That's okay, so it could be, yeah, the kindergarten, yeah, and there's a.
Oh, Goldstein.
That's different Goldstein.
Yeah.
Yes, Goldstein and.
Yeah, so there's one to give.
Yep.
And actually, maybe two, one forty-five.
And, yeah, and and the way the 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 campus is laid out, there's plenty of space, even if you go towards.
To this side of the hallway.
Even, even towards, I would say that your cut, your natural cutoff is probably the auditorium, it's probably right there.
Yeah, 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 I see it just because I know that the restrooms are very important for access too.
Right.
So then we would have one to give, so if.
And you have, you have one thirty-seven, one thirty-five, one thirty-three, one thirty-one.
That's on the hallway, that's at the ground.
Yeah. What's that? We critically needed to.
We would have to modify those in an expansion.
By the way, there's also, Mrs. Kammer, isn't there a chance that you could move down that first hallway in the elementary?
We would have to modify. The one thirty. Oh, it's, yeah.
I'm sorry, we would have two to give, so that's good.
Yeah, but it's. I don't wanna go that though. You have, you'll have two to give.
What's that?
Yeah.
No, yes, you have.
There's like three, five classrooms down that hallway.
So.
The mindset, they have this mindset of talking about this, you're talking about this fall, so.
Yeah. I know.
So we just.
You have to be talking about this now.
Yeah, this is a heavy lift for the fall.
For the parents, and I do think that the parents are gonna be, I think they just have acclimated to the idea of moving to El Rodeo and having TK be universal.
And I guess the only constant is change.
Yes, but, but think about this, those preschool kids that are at Hawthorne now are going to be the TK kids that stay at Hawthorne.
Well, those parents. Yeah. Yeah.
And they'll go to El Rodeo the next year.
Right.
So for them, those kids are acclimated already, they're gonna be the big people on campus now.
So let's talk about a drop-off situation, I mean, operationally, I don't wanna put you to the test right now, but it would be an interesting um, formula in terms of who gets dropped off at what time. It definitely would remedy um, traffic at El Rodeo by a lot.
Yes.
You just understand.
And adding to that mix, by the way, the TK that if they're all at Hawthorne, some of them will be moving back to Hawthorne for kindergarten.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
And, and, and at Hawthorne, you have the facilities too, the actual playground and, and things like that, so.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I still would, I still would prefer to have TK with the rest of elementary, because it's only TK through five, but I'm open to exploring this.
And you're hoping that all the TK will move to El Rodeo?
Yeah.
If, or the El Rodeo TK.
No, state, she wants it to stay at both campuses.
I feel like this one, this one class is driving the whole conversation, and that doesn't sit right with me. I feel like I would much rather take a step back, and I would, I would love to have a TK through five program at both schools, personally, than I think that we're accommodating this one class, which is very important. Um, it just concerns me.
Do, I would just. I'll add Judy that when the state came down with the mandate for TK, oh, sorry, when the state came down for the mandate for TK,
Yeah.
and it was right before we started the configuration, I think, conversations, cause it took years.
Opposite, so, yeah.
Well, it's around the same time, but this, we finally, for me, we finally now have the opportunity to do it right, where we can, we have the space for that, we don't have to worry about continuing to shoehorn
Mm-hmm.
this here and this here, and we have, we have, and it allows all of our schools, and I think this is what good, um, healthy boards do, is they think ten, twenty years ahead.
Yeah.
It gives all of our schools breathing room, whether they grow or not, but it's not gonna be us that were short-sighted and said,
Room to grow, yeah.
Why do they do it this way?
Yeah, it would really, it would really be convenient for my one friend who has a kid at this school and this school, so only have to go to one school,
Yeah.
but that's only for a year.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Whatever happens, it's only for a year.
And it's like seven blocks.
But for us, for us, it's for decades.
Yeah.
I understand. Yeah.
We have to think about decades, as much as we wanna think about our, our kids and our friends and who's gonna be here, who's gonna, we have to take that out of the equation, listening to what, what Laura said about programmatic,
Yeah.
listening to what Craig said about, hey, you got no play space here.
Yeah.
It's, it's all of it, like, all roads lead back to this.
Yeah.
And I could see us having another kindergarten class at Hawthorne, growing even more, El Rodeo.
Will doesn't.
Just, just one thing real quick with this whole situation too. If you're, if you're a parent, right, and you're interested in the city's preschool, and so you go to Hawthorne, you have your kid there in the city preschool program, you're excited about it, and now, if we also have the, the district's TK program there, now as a parent, I'm like, well, why am I gonna just, why am I going to take my kid somewhere else? They could just stay in this campus, go to TK, and you kinda capture them in the front end.
And it's free.
With their friends.
And some parents will have their two and four-year-olds, their preschooler, their TK'er at the north.
With their friends. Yeah. Yeah.
That's yours, and that's the change in some years.
And then, and if you wanna increase, if you want to increase enrollment, that's where you catch them, in the early stages,
I agree a hundred percent.
and they get their friends, and they start growing.
I agree a hundred percent, and I think it makes the most sense. I just think we, I, I, I think that to your point now, it's, no,
It is, and also.
it's not something you're gonna consider in the bigger range picture of planning, but it is something we have to consider in the execution and the conversation on it.
Agreed, this way.
Because it is going to be, and it should be must address with our parents and families.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think in some ways, now while you're making the move is the best time to make that change, cause you're making a change once, instead of making a change again.
Right.
Yeah. Going backwards, yes.
Yes.
So there's a lot of reasons why to do it now, but if, if so, we really do need to manage that, and I would bring in the TK parents and have those conversations with them, and really make them feel like we are addressing their, like.
Yeah, well, it would be the pre, it would be the preschool parents for the day.
You mean the, you mean the future, the future.
But we don't know that.
Yeah, I think we should, the ones that are gonna be affected by this first transition case.
Our preschoolers.
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
From all over, not even just the Hawthorne preschool.
Because the, the ones that think they're going into, um.
El Rodeo.
Hawthorne or El Rodeo, yeah.
Yes, I would have that, those conversations with them.
Yes.
Start having them now, because then they know that it's not like, oh, at the last minute, it's like boom, oh no, didn't we tell you?
You're not moving.
Yeah.
Well, but like, I, I would like to.
That would be worse than. Let's see what the city says.
TK is right now, and all the TK right now, Mary, if we start that, are already planning to go to kindergarten next year, so that isn't an issue right now, it's the issue.
It's not the, it's not the kids going into kindergarten, it's more going into TK.
Because the.
Kids going into TK, so you have to reach out.
It's, it's.
Well, but I'm saying, but by that time, they will, because they're going into TK, they will know that going in advance, I think.
Preschoolers.
Right.
I'm talking about the TK right now, they know they're either going to Hawthorne or El Rodeo.
So I think what we do, Mary, let Michael get the other questions that we've asked that are pertinent to making a final call for us on this.
Yeah, they're fine, they're not gonna have a change.
As soon as the board is more settled and we really know, that's when we can bring in those parents, because we still don't know exactly what's gonna happen, so I won't.
Right, I'm just saying, it, it does need to be.
Yeah.
You'll get them alarmed, you'll get them upset.
Yeah. The, the other thing I would just say is that, you know, if, we wanna keep Hawthorne a vibrant place.
Mm-hmm.
And so, if, if the city feels like they're out on an island, that's not going to be a place where they're going to invest in, and, and, and grow programs. They grow programs through the partnership that we have, so I would just want us to take that under consideration, that, that the more we're out of that, and they're, they're feeling like that's up to them, I, 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 I feel like they are going to struggle.
Mm-hmm, disconnected.
You know, they've always looked to us, that's why it's in the JPA, they, they look to us for that partnership, that's why people sign up. And I just think if, if this is, if we envision the Early Childhood Center to be something vibrant and exciting, and a place where young families can, can come and grow, like, then we, we can't take everything out of it and expect for the city to grow.
Right. No, I, I see it as like, like a premier early education center, and that's, there's no other way.
Then it's true partnership.
Yeah.
Right, and then you can't make the argument that we have taken the, we have all left, and we left the special ed school, the special ed class behind,
Right, right.
you know, in an inferior setting, if it's enhanced and we make it sophisticated and it's a, a specialized offering for early ed, then it would hard, it would be hard to say for optical purposes that they were abandoned.
Right.
I mean, on that same note, I would say when we, beyond, beyond this conversation, we talked about having mommy and me classes,
Right.
and having um, other programming that supports early education there, so I think that it can be really robust.
And you just.
I also wanna, I also wanna piggyback on a, on Noah's statement, putting on my enrollment hat.
A major.
When we have to sit down and figure out where we're gonna put five extra kids and there's no more space, right?
Yeah.
And, and we're trying to figure out how we're gonna open another kindergarten classroom when there is no more space.
And.
If we have the space to open the classrooms, it makes sense, we have the facilities.
And, I think it's better, it's better overall.
And, and this is the, I just want you to know, this happens every year, it's not, it's not a one-off.
Every year.
And by the way, um, you know.
Every year, we're trying to figure out where to put kids.
By the way, Will and I actually went to the site, we looked at the facilities themselves, they, they're in good, they're in great shape.
That's a good point.
You know, we just did that north, the, the field, it looks, it looks amazing.
It looks great.
It looks amazing.
It has a playground structure, and then in the future, as they expand, we can add more and more, but just as it sits right now, it's, it's ready, it's ready to go.
It's lovely, yeah.
Ready.
Lovely. The classrooms are neat, clean, and tidy.
Well, that's great, at Hawthorne, at Hawthorne.
In Hawthorne.
Yeah, yeah, and we just paid for the new turf under the kids' play, play structure, yeah.
It's ready.
Yep.
The small kids, yeah, we put a new turf out on the north field.
And that, yeah, and I was in a TK classroom just the other day, and actually, I commented um, to the teacher about how tidy and lovely it was, yeah, and bright.
It's great.
Yep. This Caver runs a tight ship?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Dr. Brady, anything else?
Really great.
Nope. We, we will work on.
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
I would, as I say, I would like to know what the city is thinking.
For me, on the ground, on the ground.
That's what I have, 'cause all of this discussion is all very good, but what is the city's?
Yeah, well, at least now we know our preferences.
Well, we know what we want, but we, you know, if we're a partnership, we have to think about.
That's our next, we're just scheduling a meeting.
Mr. Bugby?
So first and foremost, whatever the decision is here, we will make this happen and we'll make it amazing, either way. I would be remiss, I would beat myself up when I got home if I didn't share. I will always fight for the Horseman community, I wanna keep our husky pups, which are our little ones. I always wanna keep them on campus, if there's a way to make that happen, would be great. But I understand that it's tight, and it's something that we see every year, and we're going through it right now.
Yep.
We have a classroom in a conference room.
Which class is that?
The new kinder.
Got you, the, the one that came up in August, yeah.
Yes.
Where is that class?
The main conference room, you know, when you walk in the office, you go through the double glass doors and there's a conference room right in front of you?
That's where you have the small class.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So you're already busting at the seams on the ground level.
Because, because we're older for a kindergarten at Hawthorne.
So you just made an argument for both options.
Exactly.
Well, it's complicated.
If I was your writing professor, I would say pick a point and stick with it.
Nope, I can both please on this.
I think you just exemplified both, both sides.
Dialact. Dialact.
Both of us, we both get it. We both feel like this is our community, these are our people, we would love to keep everyone together, these are our, like, even my preschool city people, like, I can't read.
Okay.
But we understand that we're leaning, busting at the seams every single moment, every time it starts school year.
Will they'll be there?
They will, they'll eventually come back.
And, and brain wise, I know what's best for kids would be to have all of those kids together
Yes.
in a common space.
Yeah.
Yes.
And not squishy.
Like what Laura's.
I mean, I think that's really the vision, apparently.
I think, I think, and, and I hear you both very clearly, because I know what you're saying is, is sitting well, having worked in an elementary school, so I know. But I would, I would be remiss if I didn't say, it's, whatever it is, it's only for a year, right? So if, if you get them, after that, you get them for six years. So I think that's, we can always look at that.
To the heart. Those staff members.
Yeah, I think, Tim, I think of them too.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the same thing happened with reconfiguration.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
There's a lot of power in working together as a.
Right.
TK group with all teachers together.
And I think the board asked great questions of Dr. Brady to look into on both sides, us, budget, city issues, so this will come back, and we will, we will finish hammering this out. There was no decision made today, there was just narrowing of options. So, anything else? Great.
Thank you very much.
Session is adjourned, so you all, uh, I guess most of you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven ten, seven ten at the meeting, yes. I'm here, is, you don't, no, he's, he's tied up all day, so we have to.
I have to, it's a good time to give. I didn't ask our law. Here is, um.
But ATM is our full hour.
The.
I don't too.
Yeah, starting right.
Eight.
He said you were.
Exactly, so.
Still don't have them.
Hopefully, we go to Hawthorne.
Still don't have an AM.
How's it, thanks. Thank you. How's your family?
Good.
Good.
Busy, busy.
Yeah.
Laura said reception six to seven, and then they're doing. Right at the meeting. I don't know if the city's answer is right at seven, Pam said it would be right at seven.
Yeah.
Reception, six to seven, so.
He's, uh, he's about to turn.
He's really low now.
Yeah, yeah. Treading out.
Number three, he goes with the pole, right?
I know, they go faster.
Thank you, Will, to all. Well, hopefully.
Yeah. Oh, no, my son, he's, uh, not.
Yeah.
So he'll send something, some things, take a little.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. But thank you, thank you.
Sure, thanks to you. Thanks for everything.
For sure.
We're good.
Your arse, not her.
Correct, so I'll, I'll.
Thank you.
No, no, I think she, she's your arse.
I know, this came up.
I think all this.
Yes.
Oh, it's.
So she has to stay in there as.
Is it double?
Yes.
Yeah, it's like a magic ball.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they could. I mean, I remember growing up like that, I mean, the hood's small.
Natural points of.
But I'm walking around with a kind of, yeah.
And I'm hearing now, oh, yes, and I'm sure the drumming is a workout, yes, I'm like, yes.
Yeah. People notice.
Oh, I do so. Discussion. I do, I'll do later. How's your Tesla?
Yeah.
So, like, that's a use, but thank you. It's hard to pull. If it's a new, if it's a new, you know, falling, you know, everybody's. Like, that's, I think, that's great.
He's gonna deliver a notice.
Judy's bridge builder.
Parent square.
You got it, you got this, you got this, you can do it.
Like, basically, it's meeting, so we talk about. Reconfiguration, we would.
I mean, the way I would say.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks again.
No, I would say that's the worst.
Yes, and you brought it up.
Margaret, thank you, have a good night.
But, but Michael, so anyway.
It's a very.
They love that.
Also, it's.
They would feel, they would feel.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Does the city, the city will not.
My city does hook to us.
They are, they, they don't like to tell us.
I think.
And.
But it has to be a example, like, the first one, you have to, this is, this is.
You know, lots of. This is, this is.
And the fires, they go all the time, cause like, the fires, the fire practice. Fire.
But the reason it matters, the reason it matters, you know, you dedicate.
They all.
Yeah.
Yeah, people like.
There's one here, I'm sure.
Yeah, basically, he took.
There are, there are.
It was like. So you go, go.
People that are raised.
They don't like the pressure.
Yeah, also, the.
Yes.
They also, they, it's the place to be.
So.
I had it all made with.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, but, but.
And thank you for your.
Right.
And that's hard, because.
But eventually, but we're not today, we scored, so somebody.
Right, right, right. That is true, right, there's a reason why people there, so.
Let's go.
Oh, yeah, oh, my date is gonna, my wife's here.
I know you do big dog forever, so I have to.
I'm sorry.
I'm here to try and go tonight for the meeting TK.
And, and I'm not allowed to send out the announcement, because this was told, because it's a secret, but it's not a secret, because Schmidt had told some people, like, she knows she's getting it.
But what's the event?
Sorry, she got the, she got the.
Civility award.
Civility. Oh, and the city.